Board of Commissioners, and Rich, would you please lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm Barb Lewis, President. To my left is our Vice President Jeff Benton, our Administrator Tracy Davies, our Deputy Administrator Don Euston, and our General Counsel and Deputy Administrator Eric Hostetler, and our Clerks Brandy Wilson and Jennifer Waller. We can begin.
Resolution number two five dash four seven five, in the matter of approving the electronic record of proceedings from regular meeting held June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five.
Summude.
Second discussion, vote.
Vote on motion two five dash four seven five. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill is absent this morning. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
We do not have any public comment today. That brings us to item number three, resolution number two five dash four seven six, in the matter of approving purchase orders sent in now certificates and payments of warrants in batch number CM APR zero six two five.
Summude.
Second discussion, vote.
Vote on motion two five dash four seven six. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number two five dash four seven seven, in the matter of granting annexation petition from agent for the petitioner, Thomas L. Hart, requesting annexation of forty-four point zero five acres of land in Berlin Township to the city of Delaware.
Summude.
Second discussion, vote.
Vote on motion two five dash four seven seven. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number two five dash four seven eight, in the matter of approving travel expense request.
Summude.
Second discussion, vote.
Actually, I would like to make a comment on this. This is an interesting topic, a very timely topic. AI is becoming a bigger and bigger part of our lives and how it impacts our county and what legal issues arise from it, I think, is a very interesting topic. I'm glad to see our council going to or going to participate in this because it's a developing topic.
Oh, it sure is. No, good, good point.
So I'm glad to see Eric's going to participate in that. Eric may not be so happy about it. We're glad he is.
He's smiling. That's a good sign. Okay, please.
Vote on motion two five dash four seven eight. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
For item number six, Dr. Tonya R. Pace, the Executive Director of Helpline, has an introduction and a presentation for us this morning. Hopefully, I got her name correct.
Welcome.
You're welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you all for having me. My goal is to kind of introduce myself. I have been at Helpline since December ninth of two thousand and twenty-four, very short time. During that time, we have moved from eleven North Franklin to one eighteen Stover Drive. And so to give a little bit of history of Helpline, I think that people know what Helpline does and who it is, but just a little bit more detail. Our vision, a thriving community where members experience hope, help, and healing. The, we had a strategic visioning over the last couple of years prior to my arrival when this was a vision and a mission that was established. And I think it is befitting because that's what you want in your community. How it started, founded in nineteen seventy as Help Anonymous, volunteers answered the calls. It merged with Ohio Wesleyan, the Listening Post in nineteen seventy-four, and Morrow County Helpline in nineteen ninety-six. We have offices in three counties and services in eight counties. Some may be with contract, but we have offices in Wyandotte, Morrow, and Delaware Counties. We have more than forty staff across those counties as well. We began answering suicide, nine-eight-eight suicide and crisis lifeline calls in two thousand and twenty-three, and it's only one of four blended two-on-one nine-eight-eight lifeline call centers in the state of Ohio. In two thousand and twenty-five, of course, we moved to one eighteen Stover Drive, and we are we work with Delmore. Delmore is our landlord, Delmore Dwellings. Community partners, this is kind of a small snapshot. Source Point, the Delaware Morrow Mental Health and Recovery Services Board, who is our largest funder through property tax levies. United Way of Delaware County, Turning Point, Mary Haven, Centero, Delmore Dwellings, Pathways of Central Ohio, Family Promise. And again, that's a snapshot of the agencies with which we, some of which we partner and work with. Services, and I will say, when I, when I applied for this job, I was like, okay, they do, they have a few services, and the more, the longer I'm there, I'm going, wow, the breadth and the depth of the services. Two-on-1 Crisis Support, Information and Referral. We have services in probably seven counties, somewhere around there, and we do information and referral. We have some counties we work with when there's emergency management issues, and they're getting a lot of calls. They've asked us to field those calls as well. Nine-eight-eight Suicide and Crisis Lifeline, again, that was started in two thousand and twenty-three. There's been some shifting in the other services, and so we're seeing a slight increase in the number of calls through the nine-eight-eight Suicide and Crisis Lifeline. Connections Violence Tier Center, their task is to work with seniors. We partner with Source Point for sages and seekers and some other programs, and they link younger high school students with someone who is a sage or a senior and kind of build a relationship and some given, taken, back-and-forth regarding information. Suicide and Violence Prevention, we do that in the Delaware County Schools. We have maybe one Morrow County School, a couple, but we do suicide and violence prevention education in the school systems. Crisis Engagement, and what that, in coordinating, and what that does is that if there is someone who caused a two-on-one crisis in support or the nine-eight-eight, and there's a need for follow-up, they are referred to this service, and they can, we follow up for up to ninety days to make sure they make connections with their appointments and things of that nature. And the Sexual Assault Response Network, there are five counties we have, and I don't know if I'll get them all. Delaware, Morrow, Union, Wyandotte, and I'm missing one. There's one other. And so, since I've been there, we've had twenty-three unduplicated individuals in need of services. So one of my goals, I would say, is to be able to, if there's a way, quantify what that looks like in dollars for the services we provide for long-term, longitudinally. We have that short-term data, but nothing longitudinal. Program Data and Statistics. Four thousand six hundred and nine middle school and high school students educated in signs of suicide throughout Delaware and Morrow Counties. One thousand one hundred and four students throughout Delaware and Morrow Schools received relationship and sexual violence prevention education, and this is with the school approving that. A hundred and fifty-eight survivors helped through Siren and our twenty-four-hour rape crisis hotline with forty-one co-survivors. Four thousand ninety-five Siren Emergency On-Call Hours provided by volunteers to survivors. And what that means is if it's two in the morning, if it's four in the morning, we, if it's in Wyandotte County, we, our staff, our volunteers drive to that space, wherever that is, in the counties that we serve. Nineteen thousand ninety incoming and outgoing contacts through calls, texts, emails, in-person, and social media messaging. Fifteen thousand, over fifteen thousand referrals made to local health and human services agencies, and five thousand two hundred thirty-nine hours of volunteer service provided. Economic impact, one hundred and sixty-three thousand three hundred and fifty-two reinvested into the Delaware community. And so that's a substantial number when you consider that's volunteer hours. And the Make a Difference Day, the seventeenth annual, a reinvestment of just over forty-six thousand dollars back into the community. And I'll end again with our office location. We, one of the things that previously, we were spread across three offices, we're consolidating into one building, which allows for ease of conversation, ease of collaboration and service. If there's an issue with one department and someone we're working with, we can walk over, we don't have, walk two blocks down the street type of thing. So that makes it a little bit easier to communicate and to make sure that the individuals we are called to serve get the service in a timely, efficient, and cost-effective manner.
Any questions? Could you tell us just a little bit about your background, Dr. Pace? I know it's a very good one.
Absolutely. I hail from Northwest Ohio via Sandusky. I am a Blue Streak. That is my hometown. I was in Toledo for thirty-two years. I worked for the county for twenty-two of those years. And I worked at the Salvation Army, worked at another nonprofit. I ran a homeless shelter that housed approximately ninety-five to one hundred and twenty people a night in the city of Toledo. And prior to, immediately prior to this, I taught at North Central State College in Mansfield. So my experience is a little varied. I am a Bowling Green State University alumni. So I am here, have quite a bit of family in this area, so that is kind of a circuitous route to get here. But yes.
Oh, great.
Dr. Pace, I had the privilege of attending your open house and saw your new facility. We also toured the old facility on Franklin Street, and we realized the need for the new facility. Franklin Street House was really a neat house, but it just wasn't, it didn't fit well with Helpline. And so it was really nice to see you get, you know, spread out and get much more consolidated and efficient in one location, and did a nice job, you know, fixing that up and so on. So how's it going in the new facility? Going okay?
I think it is going well. We are working well together. I think there's always an adjustment when you realize what you need and how things go, but I think it is going well. The staff are excited to be in a new space, and believe they've been, they were at eleven North Franklin since ninety-two. So yeah, it's quite a, quite a long time at eleven North Franklin, so this is new. But staff are very appreciative, and you can see the, the improvement in the communication, as you don't have to just kind of focus on email, and you can walk around the corner or down the hall, and we have enough meeting space that we can meet as we need, so.
So have you sold the Franklin Street property?
We are working on that.
Working on that? Yeah, I think that'll be a real, real good property for someone to have. It's a neat building and a good location.
It is. It is a historical, you can tell. There's lots of history in the house. So yes.
Okay. Well, thank you, and good luck.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for the time.
Sure.
Thank you. I just wondered, any, any, your impressions then of being here in Delaware, and you've got a great background and a lot of experience in different areas, as you mentioned, and just wonder, you know, how that would compare with, with some of the things that you've done in the past?
Every community that I've worked in, because I worked for a little while in Sandusky too, Delaware reminds me of home. And so it's, I grew up in the seventies, so Sandusky, and so there's some similarities in the small downtown area and things of that nature. So, which is wonderful because I miss home, so this is home. But I think that the issues everywhere are the same, it's just the magnitude of the issues. And so you see traces of the same things, it's just the severity, if you will. I can't imagine, if working in Columbus, the magnitude would be a hundred times greater here. So it's, you see the, the same, you see some issues, and they're the same, so, but on a smaller scale.
On a smaller scale.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. I think transportation, when people are trying to get services, is an issue everywhere I've worked. And so some places have public transportation, and it's a little bit more accessible, but transportation is consistently an issue when it's trying to get to services. So that's something that I see, that it has crossed every community that I've had a foot in. So that's just one, so.
Sure. Right. That's been tough. So many people don't have access to a car and then
Yeah, yeah.
public transportation either. And our Delaware County Transit, too. I mean, I'm sure they would want to help in any way that they can.
Yes.
So.
Yes, that is on my radar, is trying to figure out how we can help facilitate something like that.
Right. Do you have any comments, Trina? Okay. Thank you, Doctor, so much for coming in. We sure appreciate it and all the great work you're doing.
Absolutely. I appreciate you allowing me the time.
Our pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to item number seven, resolution number two five dash four seven nine, in the matter of approving the First Amendment to the Agreement for the two thousand and twenty-three Local Agricultural Is it Purchase Program Cooperative Agreement between the Ohio Department of Agriculture and the Delaware County Board of Commissioners.
Summude.
Second discussion.
Good morning, Commissioner Scott Stevens, Administrator with the Delaware Saltwater Conservation District. This would be just an extension of our, or the Commissioners' Agreement with the State of Ohio to be local sponsor into the new biennium which is, which is upon us, the state biennium budget, so.
That's right.
Ask for yes, and it happened, right? We're in, so. Yeah. Yeah. Would ask for your approval of the agreement, and we can get these twenty, twenty-three applications buttoned up hopefully in the next couple of months. So, there you go.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks, thanks for all your work.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
Happy to do it.
Great program, great program. Vote, please.
Vote on motion two five dash four seven nine. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number two five dash four eight zero, in the matter of approving the two thousand and twenty-six budget for the Delaware County Veteran Services Commission and authorizing necessary levy to raise the amount approved.
Summude.
Second discussion. Welcome.
Thank you. I have just a few remarks, and they are prepared in writing, and Brian is here to assist, so.
If you could introduce yourself for the record of the recording.
I certainly will. Thank you very much. Good morning, Commissioner Lewis, Commissioner Benton. I'm Christine Santiago Foose, President of Delaware County Veteran Service Commission, and on behalf of my fellow Commissioners, our Delaware County Veteran Service Office, and the more than ten thousand Delaware County Veterans for whom we have the honor of serving, I appreciate this opportunity alongside Brian Gallagher, Executive Director of the Delaware County Veteran Service Office, to address the County Commissioners regarding our two thousand and twenty-six budget submission. I'm going to give you a quick overview of what the Veteran Service Commission and how the Veteran Service Office came about. Section fifty-nine oh one oh two of the Ohio Revised Code states that in each county, there shall be a commission known as the Veteran Service Commission. With only a few exceptions, Veteran Service Commissions are comprised of five Commissioners, each being appointed by a common pleas court judge to staggered five-year terms. The selection is made from a list of names submitted by the following veterans organizations and commencing in prescribed years. The American Legion, years ending in zero and five. The Veterans of Foreign War, years ending in one and six. Disabled American Veterans, years ending in two and seven. AMVETS, years ending in three and eight. And for years ending in four and nine, the selection may represent either the Military Order of Purple Heart, the Vietnam Veterans of America, or the Korean War Veterans Association. Although the Ohio Revised Code, section fifty-nine point oh one, fifty-nine oh one point oh three specifies the duties of a Veteran Service Commission, it does not limit a Veteran's Commission to only those duties. We can do more. Some of the duties listed in the law include employing staff to carry out the commission's duties, thus the reason for the Veteran Service Offices with the director and staff. It also includes establishing policies and procedures for the Veteran's Commission, the Veteran Service Office, Veteran's Assistance Program, and Financial Assistance Program, as well as establishing a budget to be presented to the Board of Commissioners, County Commissioners, the last Monday in May, establishing and participating in outreach, outreach programs, and establishing transportation for veterans to and from VA appointments, et cetera. Once again, these duties are carried out primarily by the dedicated employees within the Veteran Service Offices who work hard to serve our veterans each and every day. I think we can agree that we've realized that previously, we may have fallen short of adequately supporting our veteran community in Delaware County, a reality that did not reflect the values of this county or did not best meet the statutory and moral obligations we have in serving our veterans. However, within the past five years, the Delaware County Veteran Service Commission and Veteran Service Offices have undergone a significant transformation and have taken critical steps in course correction, beginning with a move into this beautiful courthouse, then member and staff changes, a new director, new positions, new and expanded programs, and the development of short and long-term goals that have been applied to an initial five-year plan and beyond for growth, a demand consistent with what is observed in other counties that have long had more robust and responsive VSCs and VSO operations. The veterans in Delaware County are reaching out for the support they have earned, and we are proud of the positive trajectory of the office and to be in a position to respond. But that growth has brought with it new, impressive operational needs, and will continue to march on in bettering our services to our veterans. As for the budget overview, as you are aware and cited in the ORC, funding for county service veteran, Veteran Service Offices shall not exceed five tenths of a mil per dollar on the assessed value of the property of the county. Five years ago, the available millage that could have been pursued by our Veteran Service Commission was just around four million dollars. Today, the available millage that could be pursued for the Veteran Services is around six point eight million dollars. A few moments ago, I mentioned where our VSC was prior to five years ago. In two thousand and twenty, our budget request was a little less than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which means that the VSC utilized under twenty percent of what could have been available and allowed for over three million dollars to remain in the county's general fund to be applied appropriately elsewhere within the county budget. This made sense based on the services the VSC was providing at the time, and the VSC was very responsible, frugal, and prudent with its budget. As we have been going through this transformation, we continue to be good stewards of taxpayers' money by gradually implementing changes to do better at providing services to our veterans and incrementally increasing our budget each year. The two thousand and twenty-six proposed budget is roughly three point two million dollars. That's actually less than what the total millage available could have been back in two thousand and twenty, so five years ago. Given the rapid growth in the number of veterans we now serve and the expansion in staffing and infrastructure required to meet our needs, an increase is not only warranted but essential. As we continue to keep pace with this increased demand, we have expanded our staff, and the necessary hiring surge allows us to maintain service quality and reduce wait times for our veterans. Although this is good, the situation has also created the need for office space, for more office space and adequate parking, both for our expanding staff and for the veterans we serve every day. Currently, the VSC looks forward to having appropriate space in the new Social Services Building, barring any changes to the commitments that have been made, and we appreciate the county inviting us to be part of that process. So thank you very much. We are also looking forward to, we are looking forward to moving into that building when it is completed in two thousand and twenty-seven, but in the interim, we'll also continue to explore options that best address space and other needs. We owe it to our veterans to provide them with service and care that reflects their sacrifices and meets their needs. We owe it to our staff to provide them with the space and resources necessary to perform their duties effectively, and we owe it to the Delaware County to ensure we are living up to our obligations outlined in the law. In conclusion, for these reasons, we respectfully request that the Delaware County Board of Commissioners approve the budget as presented, and we thank you for your time and your continued support of our county veterans. Thank you. And Brian Gallagher is here, as I mentioned, to answer any questions as well.
Any, Brian, did you want to present anything, say anything?
Just to go along with what Christine had said, you know, we have experienced rapid growth, and I think that being in this building, you know, it's a good thing to where you've seen the number of people that come in and out, and probably from where we were five years ago to the number of people coming in and out, to the number of people now that you see coming in and out, you know, is significantly increased. So, for example, one of our, our programs that has really blossomed is our transportation program. And, you know, Andrew does a great job of running that program. Initially, you know, over five years ago, we did, as far as round trips, you know, approximately two hundred transports a year. Last year, we were close to two thousand. This year, we're thirteen percent above where we were last year. It's just continuing to grow. And the same thing with what we have as far as claim work. So it's, and we're bringing on new people, doing new programs, trying to reach veterans in different ways. Just recently, yesterday, we had a trip to Mott's Museum. So we've taken a group of veterans now down to the National, you know, Aerospace Museum. We've taken to the Mott's Museum. So we're doing enrichment things to try and reach out and bring those veterans in and doing more and more stuff, not just for the stuff that's, that's, you know, as Christine had mentioned, that's just specifically when the, within the Revised Code that we have to do, but also doing stuff that we should be doing. So I think that's a big change in what our office is doing.
Okay.
Yeah, the numbers are great to see, you know, like, like Christine, the seven hundred and some thousand in two thousand and twenty, and now we're at three point two million. I mean, clearly, you know, we we support, you know, programs and services for the vets, and that's, that's just a huge increase. And, you know, you're doing a lot of good things. Like you said, transportation's a critical, and so on. So, and then, you know, we are committed to a new facility. Remember, spending millions of dollars on the new facility, and so can't wait for that to get open. And again, I'm glad to, you know, continue discussions on interim solutions, but, you know, the ultimate solution is still a couple years away. Unfortunately, we'd like to move it along faster. But, you know, the budget looks good. Glad to see the programs continuing to expand and serve our veterans, you know, and we were not providing enough services, honestly, before. So it's great to see that the programs have expanded, and I support continuing that, that effort. Our veterans deserve it.
Right. And this, this budget, I believe, is fifty-three percent over what it was last year?
I think that's the number I saw on the comparison. So significant increase.
Significant increase, right. So.
Right, but.
Obviously, we're providing a lot.
Right, right. If you look at what we're doing, you know, as part of that is also, you know, what we're doing for the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. And then, you know, coupled with that, to be able to, to take care of that issue, is if we have a person now that's an intermittent employee that's going around and taking care of, of, you know, the issue that we have with cemeteries. So I didn't know this, but there were over a period of time, one hundred and twelve cemeteries in Delaware County. Right now, about half of those are functional. So there's cemeteries in different spots of the county that have people. We've got Revolutionary War veterans that are buried in some of those locations. There's a Revolutionary War veteran that's buried on private property near Powell Road and three fifteen. So there's a lot of different places to where we have veterans that either the graves are no longer there or they're inaccessible. So one of the things that we're doing is a project to where we're going to have a permanent place to, you know, honor these veterans that are prior to, you know, World War One or prior, that are unmarked or inaccessible, that, you know, that we found veterans that graves are underneath a road. So what this project is a road. So what this project is going to do is allow us to mark those veterans and in Sunbury, Delaware and Powell, so we'll have three different markers. It is one of those different places. It'll be appropriate. It'll be honorable and it'll last another two-hundred-and-fifty years. So a, a part of that increase is this project that we're doing, and that's for twenty-twenty-six.
Well, thank you very much.
Commissioners, Tracy Davies, Administrator, just wanted to note, we've had this discussion before in session, but just wanted to bring up again House Bill three-thirty-five and ask for, you know, the VSC to continue to advocate to make sure that House Bill three-thirty-five does not get enacted, which would eliminate all inside millage for the county, which could have a devastating effect on county budgets. So just any advocacy you can do on our behalf, we would appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know one of the concerns was that House Bill three-thirty-five would be folded into the budget.
It was not.
Presented to the governor, which has not happened.
Correct.
So that's good news. It can go through a much more robust and diligent process. Because again, it is very dramatic draconian change that I think
I'm sure that the legal aspects of our associations are probably, you know, yes.
Yeah. Everybody's concerned about it.
We have our conference later this month too, so we'll be hearing that. It's a twenty-million-dollar hit just for our county.
Yeah, just for us and schools and so on, so, yeah. But anyway, congratulations. And again, we really appreciate your leadership and the board, Brian, your leadership on, you know, providing the services our veterans need and deserve, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
And the board, right, right. Vote please.
Vote on motion two-five dash four-eight-zero. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Item number nine, resolution number two-five dash four-eight-one. In the matter of approving a contract with Garland, doing business, DBS Incorporated, for the Lower Scioto Water Reclamation Facility Building Envelope Project.
So moved.
Second discussion.
Morning Commissioners, Tiffany Magg, Director of Environmental Services. So this is the last year of a two-year phase-in to repair all the roofs as well as the building envelopes at Lower Scioto. This is a project where these roofs are like twenty years old, coming up on twenty years old, so we really need to do some maintenance on those as well as the exterior walls and some painting. The winning bid was just over two-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand dollars, which we did budget for in twenty-twenty-five. The same company did the work last year and did some very good work, so we're pleased that they're a little better. Any questions?
Questions? Vote please.
Vote on motion two-five dash four-eight-one. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Did?
All right, we have our monthly sanitary approval update. I'll go over here and push a couple buttons.
Sure.
All right. So we had a busy month of June, starting off at the top with plan approvals. Evans Farm, Arrowhead, Section One. This is a Pulte project just a little bit north of where that kind of town center is. A hundred-and-twenty single-family lots. This is at the corner of Hollandback and Payette. And then we have Clarkshaw Crossing, Section Three, Phase A and B. This is that same project that we talked about up Sawmill Parkway on the east side of the road, near Home Road. This is seventy additional lots by MI in this section. And then Plum Creek, this is a, a new development over near, just west of seventy-one, near, I'm trying to think of the road right there. Plum Road, it's, it's just south, I'm sorry, just north of Plum Road in between Plum and Dustin. And this one is by Plum Creek LLC, ninety-one units in, in this development. And then Berlin Farm West, Section Seven and Section Nine, another MI Homes development, sixty-nine total lots between the two sections in this one. And then, let me make sure I don't miss any. Courtyards on Concord, this is an Epcun project over in the Tartan Fields Tributary area. There are thirty units in this, the first phase. I think you saw this on session, maybe last week. It's a, it's a slightly different subdivision agreement because in Section Two, there may be some upgrades to the pump station. And then Co-Logics is the data center that is over near Home Road and Green Meadows Drive. This is a sanitary sewer extension to bring sewer down into that data center. Kroger N-570 is in Powell. It's a new Kroger store that, this is a, once again, another sewer extension and it's near Sawmill and Home Road. And then Honey Grove, this is in North Star Tributary area, fifty-four single-family units. This is a, a Pulte development. Let me zoom in a little bit here. It's just off of Wilson Road. And then Northport Place is kind of in that same general area near thirty-six, thirty-seven, and seventy-one. This is another residential hotel by Metro. I think we saw this last month as well. We're just kind of progressing through the subdivision agreement stage with that. And then finally, sewer acceptance also for that Kroger, that new Kroger unit over there off of Sawmill Parkway. We did kind of preliminary numbers for June, new units, seventy-two single-family homes and fifty-five multifamily and zero commercial. So it's a, still another pretty strong month for us to be up there in that hundred-and-twenty-some range of new units.
Boy, yeah, things are booming.
Things are booming, yes. Doesn't seem like it's stopping, so.
Yeah, yes. Oh, gosh. Thank you, Tiffany.
Thanks. Now, again, very busy.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
That brings us to Administrator Reports.
Good morning, Tracy Davies, Administrator. I just wanted to thank our facilities team during this heat wave. We continue to have challenges with HVAC systems throughout the county. As soon as one gets up and running, another one goes down. All of our units are working very hard. So thanks to John and his team for running all over the county trying to fix our systems.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, gosh.
I have an item this morning as well. Dawn Houston, Deputy Administrator, and I just wanted to recognize our JFS Director, Bob Anderson. He received the National Pellra Pay Setter Award earlier this week in Portland, Oregon. As you probably remember, he was selected for the Ohio Public Employer Labor Relations Association Award for that same category as pay setter. So we nominated him for the national award and he received that. Unfortunately, I was not able to be there this week, but he is there and was very surprised to be selected for the award. So when he is back, I would like for him to come to session so that we can
Yes.
recognize him publicly, but just very happy for him and everything he's done for our Job and Family Services Agency. That is definitely wrapped up in this pay setter award with his improvement of staff morale and instituting merit-based pay with that union. So just very happy for him.
I think it's, so he didn't know ahead of time?
No.
He really didn't know?
They, they wanted me to let him know and I decided that I just wanted him to be surprised. So I didn't tell him.
I bet he was. Oh, that's great. That's great. Thank heavens. So you, you knew he was going, so at least
Exactly. Yes, exactly.
That's great. He's, he's just done a wonderful job and done, done so much for so many people. So what, very well deserved. Thanks. We'll bring him here when he's back.
Yeah, one of our great leaders and a really good agency. It's amazing, that, more national recognition. This is great.
Yes. Well, Commissioner Benton, you did go first.
Yeah, I get to cover things that Commissioner Merrill would cover otherwise. Few things. Delmore Open House, we mentioned Delmore, Dr. Pace is, is sharing a building with Delmore. And that open house is this morning, so I'll be going to that. The CO-A-A, the Area Aging Agency, final meeting on the transition to an ARCOG is this afternoon. So presumably that will, that will move forward. And then we'll learn more on our participation in joining that ARCOG, as we're one of eight counties that are covered in that regional service group. Legislative update tomorrow afternoon. It's going to be kind of anachromatic at this point because I think everything's pretty well finalized, although we don't know what the governor will do in terms of line item vetoing things, you know. That's, that's his prerogative to line item veto items in the budget. And he's done it historically, so we'll see if he does and if he does what, what he does line item veto. So, but want to thank Andy and Brian and Beth for their efforts. You know, very open to communication through this process. It's a messy process. We all know that. CCAO did a great job. Barry Minton, our, our team, our legislative support team did a great job in keeping us up to date on the key issues and working on them and so on. Work goes on because like House Bill three-thirty-five is not finalized by any means. And a lot of property tax initiatives, you know, on, on, on the table, so we'll, we'll see how that goes. But again, appreciate everybody's participation in that. Preservation Park Gala is this evening and that's at the zoo. And we're going to that. So that's, Preservation Park's doing a great job getting their parks added to and expanded and renovated and so on. So, a lot going on, as always.
And I'm going to regional planning while you're at Preservation Park.
Yes, I won't be able to make regional planning tonight.
I'd like to thank our lobbyists too, Bill Byers. He's, he's meets, I know, with our administrator often and, and they
Very accessible, good communicators. Let us know what's going on. If we have a question, I've, I've talked to Bill a number of times about this idea, that idea, this, this initiative, et cetera.
He's, he's really one of the decision makers down there.
Yeah. Oh, one other thing I did want to mention, the land banks did get funded for brownfield and brownfield remediation and demolition grants.
Okay.
So we'll be able to reinstate the demolition grant and continue the brownfield remediation program through the land banks. So we'll, we'll learn more of the details, but it looks like we'll get significant allocations to every county at this point.
Oh, great. Good.
So, again, assuming that, that survives the veto pen. We'll see. I don't think, I think the governor will sign it.
The governor, the governor will use that veto pen tonight on a few things. He's not happy on certain things.
I'm sure. They're not going to agree on anything.
And we do have need for executive session.
We do. Resolution number two-five dash four-eight-two. In the matter of journeying into executive session for consideration of compensation of a public employer, public official for pending or imminent litigation, for collective bargaining, and to consideration of confidential information related to economic development.
So moved.
Second discussion, vote.
Vote on motion two-five dash four-eight-two. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye. Thank you.
We are now